It is six o'clock, Tuesday, February 28th, 2022. I'd like to open this Montgomery City Council session into meeting. And so, thank you for those tuning in from the outside and those who could be here physically. Thank you for taking an interest in our city. We'd like to ask that you silence your cellphones at this time to avoid any interruptions in our meeting. We do have a quorum present with three members present, two are absent. Mr. TJ Wooderson is not here and Ms. Pat Easley is not here, but we do have a quorum. And so with that, I'd like to ask you to join me in the application and the salute to the class. Heavenly Father, help us to be a grateful people, grateful we live in the land that we live, we have the freedoms that we have. We just thank you and praise you for those who fought for those freedoms. We ask that your hand of protection continue to be on this country, our state, our city, our schools, all our institutions, that you guide and direct us in the way that you would have us to go and protect us from harm's way. Grant us wisdom in making the decisions we feel like will be most prudent moving our city forward and continue to bless us as you already have. And we thank you in advance for all things. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
With the American flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your beloved, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great and just strong. To the Texas flag.
In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, in the visitor's citizens forum, we have one person signed up, Ms. Sarah Countryman.
Good evening, Council. I made a record request on February 1st, and that request was responded to by Nikki Brown on February 2nd, of which I respectfully responded to on February 3rd. In that record request titled clarity, I pointed out several things like incorrect minutes being reported by city staff and approved by council that were fact wronged and were wrong meetings. There was also a request for two newspaper PSAs and the affidavit by the publisher, which would be the courier of the official newspaper verifying the publication, shall be filed in the office of the Secretary of Municipality. My record request is still outstanding for February 3rd and is beyond the 10-day period of the state mandates. As a reminder, until the proper steps are taken in new ordinance to the Texas Local Government Code 52.011, these new tax rates from Waste Management are negated. They're validity, sorry, validity is negated, but ordinance and all taxpayers are entitled to a refund due to the city overcharging and not having the legal authority to do so. The new rate on the bill I received today and the previous bill from December 17th and January 17th included 2.5% increase, but yet proper steps not taken. I understand that Waste Management wasn't on the December or January, but it wasn't adopted for seven days and you have to have two records in the courier, in PSAs and the courier, and then an affidavit from the courier stating that all of this had been done before you take on the new rates. A reminder request, the only request not being ignored, unanswered, not responded to as a reminder of the taxpayer requesting information that's both in my right to request and my obligation to respond. I expect city staff to follow those instructions and ordinances, and if they are not followed, then why do they exist? And why is the ordinance on tonight's agenda this evening to be approved? If that doesn't really matter, we have a lot of ordinances that, you know, as we all have been encouraged lately. I'm ready for place three of upcoming election. When I went online to sign up, the link provided gave an error message when trying to download the candidate package. I see today that it seems to be fixed post the deadline. While checking the elections page on the city, the link to result of the drawing for order of names on the ballot, I noticed something unusual. When I clicked the listing of candidates for May 6, 2023 City Government General Election, it shows City Council Place One is unopposed, which is correct, but it states a certificate canceling this race attached. What does that mean? I wasn't able to find out what a cancellation certificate looks like because it was not attached. What I did see is our signatures verifying the drawing. I hope the city secretary should think that, that none of the races can be canceled because Carol Lately certainly is going unopposed, but she still must be on the ballot and still must receive one vote to be elected. According to the Texas Secretary of State website, Section 2.051, each candidate from an office that is to appear on the ballot in the territorial unit is unopposed and no opposed at large is to appear on the ballot. I look forward to the city's resolution of potentially correcting Waste Management and improving service and ensuring that our ballots are properly, that this election is properly conducted. Stay hopeful, Sarah.
All right, consent agenda, item one, approval of amendments, City Council Meeting 214, 2023.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of City Council Meeting 214, 2023, as presented.
Motion by Carol, did not hear Cheryl. Second by Cheryl. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote on favor of approving item number one, consent agenda, approval of minutes from 214, 23. Say yes.
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 Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve the minutes. Consideration possible action, item two. Consideration possible action on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending its municipal budget for the fiscal year 2122, appropriating the various amounts herein. It's attached in Exhibit A containing findings and a Texas Open Meetings Act clause and providing an immediate effective date.
Thanks, Mayor. In December, at your December meeting, you guys postponed or tabled the year-end amendment for the 2022 budget. The actual motion put that on the February 14th agenda. It was my fault, we failed to put that on that agenda. We weren't ready at that time to hear the order to bring it forward to y'all. So we wanted, I wanted to have it on tonight's agenda just to explain that, bring it back and ask you to postpone it until the March 14th agenda. Anthony and I and other staff have been working on this. We've got it figured out, we're going to be ready for the March 14th agenda. So tonight, this is just a matter of formality, I'm just asking you to officially postpone this until March 14th and have it on tonight because you had it set to this date from your last motion. It's kind of confusing, but I'll try to.
Yeah, I just have one. There is a limit to how long we can push that. What's the date?
I'm sorry?
There is a limit to how long?
March 31st.
Okay.
And you have been working on it and you're comfortable with it coming on March the 14th?
Yes, this man. We met with the order today, we went through everything, went through all the deadlines, went through all the issues, so we're all on the same page and we're good to go.
Any other questions? All right, I maintain motion.
I'll make a motion to postpone the year-end budget amendment to March 14th of 2023, City Council meeting.
Motion by Casey, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Carol, motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. Excuse me, my time is up. Get a hammer? This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of postponing item two until March 14th meeting, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will postpone the ordinance, item two, until March 14th. Item three, consideration possible action on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending Section 26 Criminal Penalties of Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations of the City Code Ordinances, ordinances to impose a civil penalty on persons who violate Article Two, repelling all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing a severance clause in the Texas Open Meetings Act clause and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, Council, the ordinance before you adds an additional penalty to regulations currently, the city does have the ability to fine up to $500 per day for current survivors in the building code. What we're asking them to do, the most common thing that the city does folks starting work without a permit, some of these are regulars, and so what we're asking them to do is to give us a tool that's a little simpler and easier to administer. In addition to having that $500 per day, we're asking you to allow us to charge two times the permit fee for any work done without a permit. The additional staff time to ask for generally the contractor on getting those permits.
So that would be twice the permit fee plus the $500, correct?
We would, you could issue that citation generally, it's enough of a deterrent just to make it twice the permit fee and not have to get into the issuing the citation, there's definitely just either someone is going to pay the fine or they can go to court for it. What we're trying to do is have something that doesn't involve that for almost every situation, the two times the permit fee will solve it. If it was in a egregious situation, you still have the option to issue a citation and without to go through the court process.
So you can either issue it or waive it? The $500?
For the $500 fee, right, the city may issue a citation up to $500 per day.
So, so my question is this, if, if the point of doubling the permit fee is to, unless the permit fee is over $500, why don't we just give them a $500 fine and knock them in the head?
It's 700, isn't it? Per apartment, isn't it?
Or that would be, so I think the 770 is what you're referring to, that's the minimum residential building permit fee. Say, if you were going to get an electrical permit or something like that, depending on the number of inspections you would have, say the electrical permit is 250. If someone was doing electrical work, what this would do would be allow us to charge $700 for it. And again, kind of the idea is to not have to go through the hoops of either getting a code enforcement officer or a patrol officer out to issue a citation and then go through the court process. This is, you know, a way to quickly get it resolved, but still does have some teeth in it to encourage. Again, this is, we generally don't need a lot of this, we want to do a lot of times it's kind of the folks who know better.
So what's the, how do we track it? So how do I track that this guy got, had to pay double, but that guy didn't?
It'd be something that either Rick would see when he was out, you know, on a job site and see something else happening next door, down the street, or see something, you know, on that job site. So they pull in an electrical permit and all of a sudden they're doing plumbing work, then, you know, he would be able to say, hey, now you're doing work without a permit, this work, you know, doesn't require this, especially in cases if it's a licensed trade contractors, they know that they need a permit, they know what's required.
But my question is, that guy, A, gets caught without a permit and we tell him, hey, you need to go get a permit. This doesn't say we have to, it says we can. B comes in and says, we don't know this guy, so you know what, we're going to double yours, but we know him, so we're not going to double his. Right? There's two, there's, it's great, guys. There's, that's leaves open to, to personal judgment and that's not what ordinances are for.
The way that, as I read the section that we're acting is, any person, plumber, corporation that operates under this article without a built permit shall be required
Okay.
to pay the city an amount equal to two times the actual cost of the building permit. We did talk about, we want it up to three times, and my thought is you don't want a subjective opinion in there because then you're, you know, exactly in a situation where, hey, you know, I know you, so I'm not going to do this for you, or I'm going to do this because you're, you know, someone that I come from. So this is, you know, pragmatic where it's, this is what the permit costs if you are caught doing work without a permit. And Rick is here, you guys want to ask?
Yeah, that'd be great. So is there some kind of citation, some kind of thing that says, yes, I caught them without a permit?
So what, isn't this very common in other communities? The way we are now, if somebody starts a project and doesn't have a permit and they did the job, built, never called for inspections, you know, remind us we can do. So the idea is if in the process of doing another inspection, that's the end of the day, somebody was doing something pretty house and down for hours of respect, and a long time ago, hey, these guys don't have a permit, so I don't know. And of course, they, well, we didn't know we had to have a permit or whatever. So by, which is pretty common for contractors, so. But where it gets around real quick, all of a sudden you get caught, well, all we've been able to do presently is you get caught, you have to pull a permit. So, you know, you're trying to sneak by anyway, but now if you get caught, you gotta pay double the permit fee, worries around real quick and that's kind of the incentive to go ahead and do it right from the beginning.
So I understand the, the point of it, right? But at what point does that guy, you're out doing your thing, you go to another house, he says, oh, I gotta go get a permit. How do we know he's supposed to get charged double?
So if we go to an inspection, I, we always check before we schedule an inspection to make sure they have all the permits. So if, for example, there's no camper permit, we go on the job and we're doing electrical inspection and the camp guy's in there putting in his stuff, go, hey, where's your permit? Where are they to get it? Yeah, at that time, go get it. But if they just like you're doing the job and they're finished, well, they never did pull a permit, that's when it should be double permit.
I think what he's getting at is we need documentation.
Yeah, there's no documentation.
Need to make sure we can track it and make sure the city's getting the money that they're supposed to be getting and that we have documentation consistently, otherwise it inherently becomes subjective, doesn't it? We catch this one, but not that one, and that gets around.
I do understand your point, and so that is just a communication. And so Rick, you know, tells the office, tells the permit clerk, hey, you know, this is where the address is, and these guys, you know, either I talk to these guys or the code enforcement officer, she goes out and says, hey, you know, you guys are doing work without a permit, but, so I think what you're, to the point of what you're asking, it's a communication thing between folks that are seeing it in the field and folks in the office who are going to be issuing that permit. So we wouldn't be in a situation where, you know, where he catches somebody out, you know, doing something, or someone else catches someone out, you know, doing something, and they come in here and act like, you know, nothing ever happened, they're just here for the first time.
Okay.
I think that's the main thing.
What we need here is just to create a document, like essentially a civil citation. That way, you just have a name, address, property owner, and it's followed away and you can keep record of the property owner, address and file it. So I think that's what you're alluding to.
I'm looking for something that tracks this, right? Because otherwise, he pulled a permit. Why did he have to pay double? I don't know. Why did that one not have to pay double? I don't know that either.
Sure, it does make a lot of sense to create that form, and that's something that the permit software can easily, you know, upload that into, so we can, you know, have the record of it.
I think it is good to keep the code enforcement out and just streamline it, less people involved in the, in the deal until you have to. Now, with that said, this includes solar panel work?
Includes everything.
Because I, I see zero permits on this month. My neighborhood is so bad that we're going to an HOA formation type of meeting, and I'm going to bring this up, don't we have solicitation and, you know, we're just getting inundated, is what I'm saying. And, and they're seeing all over West, and I see zero permits for, how do we get a handle on that solar while we're at it? How do we do that?
I actually had a prep on what we permitted, I think it was our 23 permits, and we're sending those to Mar-a-Lago and the city like started to work. That's one of the problems that we're having is they'll pull permits, and my impression is you've got some corporate sale organization that's going out to sell the panels, and once they got that, then they subcontract everything out. Somebody, you know, ships the products, they subcontract somebody to install it, and we go out there, yeah, all right, we're, we're in account, you know.
So let me ask you something.
Once they get stunned a couple times, there's no permits.
So Rick, isn't it the installer that, that is required to get the permit versus the?
The sales?
I thought it was the installer.
Licensed electricians.
So what, what Casey's asking for is that if there is a double permit fee, there should be some kind of documentation into that, why there was a double, what, what is, okay.
Oh, so the other day we had a situation where somebody at a strip center at a lease base, and the general contractor had his permit, and I go to do an inspection, and plumbing's all done, and capital's all done, nobody pulled a permit, so I went ahead and had my office set up an inspection, and I failed them. And so they had to finish a reinspection fee first of all, but then they had to come and pull the permits, and they're both, oh, oh, they had their permits. If we ran the charge in double, they would try to slip in and just, yeah, that's what's happening now. They run in, put it all in, and just run down the road and they ran that permit. That's called an inspection.
So with that comment, Caleb, is this touching very close to what our overall goal is to be, whether it's a developer, whether it's an installer or whatever, and they don't do what they're supposed to do, that the city has some sort of way to recoup that money or fine or whatever? Isn't it the same camp as developments that don't develop right?
Absolutely. So it's just a less complicated enforcement mechanism, because with the criminal citation, it requires the city to issue the citation, but then municipal court then has to handle the issue, and the person can either pay or they can fight the ticket. Where here, this is just a less complicated deterrent. You don't have to jump through all those hoops.
To issue a citation, the code enforcement approach, you have to document it, then build a case. This way, guy gets caught, you say, go pull your permit, it's going to be doubled, it's up your head, and you come up with the money.
I just hope we get a handle on it, so when we're reading these reports, it's actually accurate. To all that I'm seeing and all that we're approving and noting and, and how much money that can add up over time. So we need to get a handle on this with all this development. And if y'all think this is going to do it, and you can document it, keep us posted on that, because we want to refine it and make it work, that's a lot of money.
This gives us one more tool, it's not a, there's not a, you know, a magic, it's going to solve everything, but this is, again, one more tool that we can use to try and, you know, help with the compliance issue of getting a permit when you know you don't have it.
Right. So the money part of it is not that, I mean, it is, it can be a significant amount, but more than, more than that, we need to make sure that we're getting the permits that they get inspected, right? So when they pull in a permit, now they have to have an inspection. Now we know it's built right, you're not going to burn a house down and a neighbor's house down. So I just want to make sure that it's trackable and enforceable, right? So we can pass ordinances all day long, but if we don't track them and we can't enforce them.
We can track this.
Okay.
In the last year, how many people have not pulled permits in the city? In the last year?
As far as, they come back, again, if we get them, pull a permit, again, there's differentiating.
You think five, you think 10, you think 20?
Most of by definition, if they don't pull a permit and they don't get caught, we don't know about it. If someone tells them, hey, you know, the city, you know, they're going to bother you, just keep rolling, there's, you know, we're not in the loop on that. But if there's something that we know about, I would probably say, you know, a dozen times, you know, once a month or so, again, it's not an epidemic, but there's certainly, you know, situations where.
And this is also for, like homeowners? And this is commercial, residential? This is everybody?
Right, this would be anybody who's doing the work, whether it's a contractor, whether it's a customer.
And what about sign permits and things like that? Is this all permits? Does this?
Only building permits.
Only building, you know, related permits.
So the sign ordinance falls under Chapter 66, still a permit, but not a factor.
Not under this?
Unless it's one that, again, if it's, you know, one, say like the channel signs or what they call a channel sign, that you probably signs and things like that that are up on a building, that's a little bit different than someone just putting up, say, a, you know, one of the election type signs or something like that.
And do other cities have an ordinance like this that adds that extra that I have to pay twice a permit if I didn't pull my permit at the beginning to add on to my house?
Right, in order to shame it, equally as pretty standard, then certainly it's something that I ran across as a contractor back when I was doing that.
So to be clear, any motion to approve this would have the stronger language of shall be and not in the discussing can be, right? So we're passing that ordinance language.
Right, the actual word is actually shall.
Well, it says that.
It says shall.
Yeah, it says shall be.
Good one.
So you really do not know how many permits were not actually pulled in the City of Montgomery last year?
No, and they, just, again, by definition, if not pulling a permit, they learn up here and it's, you know, and something that you don't know about.
So Carol, are you asking?
So from, go ahead.
Are you asking for, like, if some, let's say hypothetically, somebody did a remodel that had plumbing that needed to have a permit on it? Are you talking about that someone actually had that done and just did it without ever pulling a permit and then went on their way?
Well, they're telling me that they're going to catch me with my inspection. Well, if I never pull a permit.
You don't call for an inspection.
Then I'm not going to get caught, so.
But here's the thing, the plumber knows he should have a permit, the electrician knows he should have a permit.
Well, there's a lot of them that come into gyms that have no earthly idea they have to pull a permit in the City of Montgomery.
Ooh, they don't need to be doing your work then.
I'm just trying to make sure that we're adding something to another ordinance.
Right, and so again, this isn't a new, you know, penalty that, where there wasn't one before, this is just a simpler one than the one that we currently have. Again, kind of to the point of, you know, you issued the citation, it either goes to court. Most construction jobs, especially for, say, an electrical or a plumbing job, that's a couple days, you know, work for work. The court process is, well, that's going on the topic for next month, and so we're talking about something, again, where, you know, the timeframe for going to court to dispute a citation is way longer generally than what, you know, we see in terms of, you know, an electrician going out to wire a, you know, in Rick's example, the, you know, build out of a, you know, shell space in strip center, so.
So Rick, you're actively training our own plumbing electric, electrical trainers as we talked before, right? So you've got two, you've got two people, your son and another, that are actively, if we put people out there more in this manner, there would be a greater chance at least that y'all could say, okay, here's a cat, ain't doing things right, and we need to go code enforcement or whatever we have to do to get them out of town, we got, so I guess there's at least a better chance of catching these people, right? Who are not doing things right?
Yeah, my son, actually Stephen is in plumbing prep this week, so he's prepared to take this, let's say, license exam and go to BYU by then, he probably makes multiple visits. They're both right now certified as combination residential inspectors, so they've got to concentrate on houses while I do the commercial stuff. Yes, a couple more sets.
If we can keep that trend, you can see where it would at least increase our odds of onsite catching them type stuff. All right, any other questions? Ready for a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented?
Do we have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Carol. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote on favor of approving the ordinance of item number three as presented. Say yes?
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and the motion carries. Departmental reports, item four, sales tax report.
Thanks, Mayor. I refer you to your reports from SRI, Sales Revenue Incorporated, the packets. Just a couple of highlights, we have an 8% increase in taxpayer filings compared to this time last year. We have a 72% decrease in sales tax, tax revenue compared to February 2022. Really, those are the two big highlights. I'd be happy to try to answer the questions you have on this report. And I think they're going to be coming to your meeting in April, the rep from SRI, just come talk to you about some things. I can't, Dave, do you remember exactly what he wanted to talk about?
They do a quarterly, you know, update.
Okay, so this is standard, so he's going to be coming and doing the update.
It's a deeper dive than what, you know, we do in the off months.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions? All right, now we'll move on to item five, financial report.
I'll defer to Mr. Laston.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, good to be back again. Just wanted to thank the staff for covering me the last few weeks while I've been out. I'm trying to let Ash put sleep, so. Go over your financial report, page number two, your account balances, just under five months' reserve on your general fund, you should be, whenever I do the five before quarter of the next month, I will cover December for this month, just because of the timeframe that I was out, but I will cover any of February's information, enter my Enter March 20th, so this is just one month's worth of reporting. Back five months, just under five months' worth of reserve for your general fund. You'll start to see more of that when I report next month with your ad more taxes that came in January. About 20 months' reserve in your NBC and also eight months in your utility fund. The next several pages, three through eight, are your disbursement receipts and interest for the month, for the month of December. And then going on to page number nine, your budget. Currently, or as of December 2022, you were 29% collected with your revenues and 22% expended for this week here. I also want to point out that I did pay, that I did go ahead and pay the debt service payments as of Friday, so we're good to go on those. Next one's won't be due until September 1st, so that's going to be taken care of. And that's all. Any other questions?
So the payment has been made for the debt.
Yes, ma'am.
But to clarify, maybe for Anthony as well, but also with Gary, what Gary and I have talked about, the average taxpayer doesn't, doesn't think like this. It's, it's so what I'm hoping we can do is be able to display on the screen the way that average taxpayer, you know, this is good for all of us, right? They think monthly, this is, this is what we had coming in, this is what we had going out. This is what our budget says, here's why we roll. And I'd like to be able to get to where we could summarize it and show it right there on that screen, okay? And that, and that way, some of the stuff you're telling us, we're looking here, level C. So if y'all can work towards that, that'd be great.
Sure, we can do that.
All right. Item six, utility billing report.
Call, defer to your corporate, corporate note.
Mayor Council, the general fund took in just under $200,000. From the month of January, $196,244. We issued 25 building permits in the month of January, typically a slower month for contractors. We have just over 1,000 utility accounts. And next page on the city account, water usage, see that the irrigation is definitely off. Makes sense for January because the numbers are way down in the monthly TBC, in particular with memory park. That'll be after answering any questions or comments I have.
On the community building irrigation for January, why is that so high? Did we have a leak or something?
Yeah, the, the, there's two tiers at the community building. One is the back restrooms and one is the building and the irrigation is titled on the building. There was a leak with one of the bullets.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. Item seven, utility operations report.
Good evening, Council. To do your operations report for January 4th and 3rd. This is all the district works on the city. On toll 19, the lift station 2 in Iowa, we had a trip on this bump 2 reset, bumped out and reset the line for the issues. On 1224, bump 19, high FPT level, this was due to a airline, a top FPT that had cracked. We were able to isolate it, it's since then been fixed. Waterway 3, toll 29 is derm freeze, the backflow valve busted. They had to shut it off and it has to be fixed. Since, on January 4th, the station 10, the lift pump under coal, got there, there was no issues. Ended up being a relay, was sitting out false alarm, sort of, I don't know. On 1-6, we did have a water wall leak, called at 290 Woodstock, where a discoreration of the water. We flushed the lines and did verify the customer, that all was okay, before we left. On 1-7, the station 3, Iowa, went out there, level was high, but it was dropping, all pumps were running. And they stayed around until the pump shut off to make sure everything's good. January 11, the federal tower had waterway 2, and lift station 4, 5, and 6. This is due to a storm that had came through the city. And they stayed on site until power was restored to all sites, then verified all the work was working. On January 12, waterway 3, we had a water leak on the EDA control. A small pinhole leak that was fixed by the operator while on site. January 12, we had a water hole leak, called 1-1-4, had a flush the main line, did verify the customer, the water was clear on their side. January 13, we had a, this pump 2 was not cycling, had not cycled in a couple of days. Now they're just come out, out of a back alternator, that was replaced and all equipment is cycling properly. January 16, waterway 2, had a level leak on the FPT. This was isolated, we had to take that and plug it out and make it repair. This has been fixed and the plug is back online. And then on January 17, waterway 3, backflow, the valve busted. They had a back gasket in it, so it was leaking a little bit, we, that is since then, been fixed. Page 4, your wastewater plant flow detail. Flow for general was 6.99 million gallons. The air pressure flow was 225,000 gallons. Which was 50%, 50% of that permanent testing. Page 5, your discharge installations, you had no excursions, all samples developed in the department. And since we are water pump report, pump the pool of 9.93 million gallons. We flushed 371,000. And sold another 8.44 million gallons. Our cap order was not lower than what we have seen, was at 88%. We are checking the well layers, make sure that they are calibrated properly. And bring the pool seat, to jump up next month. Have they provided both water plants, make sure there are no visible leaks. Make sure that not losing water at the source. Page 7, here's your groundwater production, showing that we bought 8.96 million gallons. That shows the last 13 months running numbers. And then page 8 is your running cap order. Any questions or concerns?
A number of those leaks, being in January, cold water, I mean, cold weather influence even things like alternator as well as the valves and meters, or it just happened?
No, usually that equipment's warm on this one, so it's never an issue. Obviously, some of the leaks that we had on the backflow caused potential freeze. So we have some other white leaks that were freeze that were, that were repaired pretty quickly.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Item 8, Public Works Report.
Public Works Director, Mr. Mucker.
Good evening, Mayor Council. You have our report in front of us. Be glad to ask and answer any questions relating to your report.
I would just like to note that Sheriff Fox is waving the Texas flag for something.
No, Mike, and then put up so many pretty flags for us this now.
We got a couple more tomorrow. We had to order some brackets for the flags downtown. And they came in earlier today, so we're going to get those fired up tomorrow.
Love it to see the break apart.
Yeah, thank you.
There was a comment on your neighbor or whatever that's called about Monday, the holiday. What's the last holiday we had?
President's Day.
President's Day? That there weren't any flags out at the park. Do we normally put them out? Because the park was packed. There were people all over the park.
President's Day is not one that we have typically put out the flags, not that it's not not worthy holiday for or anything, it just, we haven't did.
We haven't in the past, okay.
It's definitely something that we can't, we don't have, we don't have a set schedule of them that, yes, we're doing these, no, we're not doing these, we just kind of play it by ear. Something that we want to add is definitely not, not an issue to do it in the future.
Any others? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Item nine, engineers report.
Mr. Booth.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I'll have a copy of our report and I'll go through some of the highlights, some of the, the, our other topics. On the JLO project for the water plant number three generator, we had our final walkthrough with Quiddity and the contractor on track to reaching first and contracted working to address all kinds of items. They also ordered the replacement auto guide alert that I authorized at your last meeting and they will be installing that at Congress. Going on to page two of our report, on the water user came ditching grading and sanitary sewer rehab, the contractor has addressed all kinds of items identified at the inspection back in January. And so we'll be expecting to present a certificate acceptance at your next meeting. Items four and five, the updates are very similar. We received railroad plan approval on both of those projects, either in January, February respectively. On the water line project, we are still working through comments with Techstock and we're working with the developer, the Redwood Meadows property for final alignment of both projects since they will be timed in. Going on to page three, the downtown sanitary sewer rehabilitation, the contractor has completed all of their concrete repair work and they are expecting to begin the CIPP lining work this next meeting, starting with Monday. Items nine and 10 on here, the 2023 rehab and the lift station 10 improvements. We received both surveys this month and we are proceeding with the design of both of those projects. And then flagship old heart, we are wrapping up the design this week. We are planning to begin advertising this project in paper next week. And we'll be receiving bids later in March and we will present a recommendation for enter eagle 11th, the council meeting. Given about approximately 30 days for contracts, we plan to have the contract get started in late May or early June after school is out and we'll leave a lot of the daily traffic on the flagship. A significant amount of fan reviews this month, those are all listed below. Couple that I wanted to mention were those Dutch Bros, who provide a conditional approval subject to receiving their flat, so they can, running a certain construction, but knows certificate of occupancy will be provided until the flat is recording. And then the same on the Raver T, so they are just working through platforms at this time. Platform reviews are also listed here, if y'all had any questions on those. Page five of our report, City 149105, right turn lane. The latest that we've still heard from Techstock is that they are planning to be done with the turn lane in March. We are continuing to push for updates, we've all seen the progress.
Right, right. That's what that is, progress. I got it.
Access management from Grimes County to Shepherd Street. We are continuing to coordinate with them and make sure that they are including lighting in the plan set. Since the project's been laid a couple of years, the latest plan set that we have from them is a 30% drawings and lighting is something that will be placed into a later set. We are, we are continuing to remind them that it's something that we want to see with it. And then the last page of my report, page six, Low Star Park with bridge repair. We did receive updated plans from them on Friday, so we're reviewing them. If you have any last comments, we'll send them in their way and they are expecting to start bidding shortly, within the next couple of weeks, if they'll start into it. And then Low Star Parkway above Los Springs intersection, at your last council meeting, you all committed in a local agreement with Narvik County. And it is our understanding they have not yet approved the agreement at the time. Your active development maps, showing what is going on in the city and that's all I have for the report.
I may have missed it, but the flagship work, if it begins beginning of the summer, we don't expect that to go into the school year, do we?
We do not. We're expecting about 50 days of early construction, so it should be wrapping up right before school starts.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Item 10, municipal court report.
Mr. Stuckey.
Today is your birthday? Yesterday was your birthday?
February 21st.
February the 21st.
Good evening, Mayor Council. We have the court report in front of you. In January, the total citations class was 86. The revenue was $27,986.26. Just to note, we ended up successful grad class in January. Myself, Officer Clark, and Officer Gray, so it was really good to be turned out for our grad first grad class thanks to Chief Bubba. Any questions? Thank you.
I'll maintain the motion saying happy birthday.
Hey, she was famous. She was on Channel 11. I watched her.
Channel 11, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Council. You have the report there. Also attached to that report is our yearly racial profile and report, if you have any questions on that.
Any questions? If not, thank you.
Actually, I do, Chief.
Okay.
I'm sorry. So I just see, and this is a good thing, I think. But our citations are continually down, like trending down over the last eight months?
Yes. I wish I could stand here and tell you that, yeah, we're going to get the citations up, but that's not something that's, that's going to fail off because of.
No, I'm just asking, are we seeing, are we seeing less, less lawbreakers? Because that's a good thing.
No, no, that's not, that's not, that's not the idea. You have some officers who've got a lot of citations, you've got some who are not going to write any, and you got some points. And with us, I got to tell you, the last, we're trying to hire some people, but in the last, those last months that you're talking about as well, we've had a lot of calls in between the state and officers for a pretty long time. We had one call that took an officer almost to a road, drove out of shift to complete. So that coupled with, with those things, yes, because I write the streets too. And I stop people, you know, I get really feeling so bad for each other. I stop people too as well, and sometimes I don't have to take a book. So that's, you know, we are looking, have some avenues on that, just got to be very careful.
Oh, absolutely. I was just wondering if we were just, what people are behaving or what the deal was, so.
They're behaving about the same.
We'll say that anyway. Item 12, city administrator report.
Thanks, Mayor. This is January kind of leading into February a little bit, some of the activities. Mayor and I, Mayor Hines and Latrell, for a general discussion. Still working on finding a finance consultant to assist us, we've been working pretty hard on that. Met with several firms, talked to several candidates. Thought I had a contract as late as last night, I'm ready to go. Candidate backed out, just right after I had the contract of the firm. Don't know why I didn't talk to candidates, they're telling me they took another job. So we're going to keep trying, keep looking, I'm just not confident what we're going to get. But now that Anthony's back, I feel more confident about our process, our numbers. So we may get to a point where we may not need this. However, I still want to try to, try to look and see if we can get somebody here in the short term just to help us out and get us pointed in the right direction. I won't have a budget amendment and a contract at your next meeting like I have my report, but I'll keep you posted on this. Also, I sent an email to each one individually just to set up the time for us to get together, have an individual update, we can talk about this a little further at that time. So just let me know what you guys want to meet next week. I'm also working on the mobile food vendor and food truck port ordinance. Making some pretty good headway on that. So I went and researched, looked at best practices in other cities, talked to some other administrators in some other cities, find out what pros and cons, pitfalls. administrators in some other cities, find out what pros and cons, pitfalls, some of these cities have realized with their ordinance. So obviously, when we're looking at doing something like this, we want to look at what cities have been successful, so that's what I'll pull from. But I'm just going to try to cherry pick what I can and bring back an ordinance to all that makes sense. Um, and the emphasis, of course, is going to be on being business friendly, uh, while preserving our high quality aesthetics and our, our culture, our community culture. Um, I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and the MDC meeting, which will be a regular, regular activity for me. And tomorrow through Friday, I'll be attending the TML Midyear Small Cities Conference in San Antonio. Ascension update on that, we're fortunate enough to get a scholarship for the registration, and part of travel, um, and accommodation cost. For me, it's about the networking, this is a good opportunity for me to get to know my counterparts in other cities, some of the elected officials. I sent you the programs, you can see on there, they've got a lot of updates, uh, but this will be a good way for me to kind of get a good introduction to, um, the Texas Legislature and what's going on in local revenue in Texas. Couple of announcements, Saturday, March 4th, is Saturday, 8:30 through 11:00 AM, the Montgomery Historical Society will be hosting an open house at the Panale H Davis Museum, located on Liberty Street in downtown Montgomery. Also, April is Library Month, so we encourage everyone to pitch your local library, especially Montgomery's Charles B. Stewart West Front. And that's all I have to say there.
If not, an intended motion to approve the reports as presented, items four, three, 12.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion is by Cheryl.
Second.
Second is by Casey. Motion is applicable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving the reports as presented, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve the reports as given. Executive session, we have none. Counsel in quiet. If not, I have a couple of things, if you'll, that's, that way, that's your way of saying it. Uh, first, I just want to say that, uh, I had a, you noted that we're doing Library Month, April. I had a young lady approach me, and I think the correspondent, I just want to make sure, she's the head of the Montgomery High School Thespian Society, so we will recognize that in March the 14th, right?
Yes.
Okay, wanted to make sure I covered that. Uh, kind of sponging off of two things, that Gary and I had a meeting with Congressman Latrell, and that was part of his campaign present, presentation or promises to get with all the mayors. And, uh, we worked that meeting, and then last EDC meeting, we had a very passionate plea by a very upset, um, real estate broker, uh, who brought up a lot of reasons to be upset. So then I met with him a couple of days later, and so here I am with the solution to that upsetness. What was he upset about? Well, he's upset about what all of us taxpayers are upset about. We're not getting a lick from the county commission, and we've been told this for years and years and years, that they're not peeing a drop. It's just not happening. So, staff has made their pleas in the past, I've made mine, this conference made hers, other council members probably made these pleas, engineers have made their pleas, it's not working. So my solution is simple, simply this, and I've given a letter, and Gary, I'll give you one as well, that I fashion to Senator Culcorst. We're very fortunate to have her, Gary, you don't know, but she was years in Congress. I know Dave's been impressed with her as well, and I have. She's a go-getter, okay? And I sent that email that they're reading now with a lot of detail, trying to get help from her. She's now a senator. We actually have three senators. I had already called long ago Robert Nichols, expressed my concern. I've already met at the commissioner's office. It's not working, folks. So this is my plea to everybody. It's going to take all the taxpayers to present themselves as voters of Montgomery County, and the time to do it is now, folks. You got to strike now. That long star loop, I can't find anybody who will say it's anything but a county road, and it's a sorry county road. It's not going to hold up, folks, and we can't sit here and hem-haw around it. It's got to be more than a handful of people, and it's got to be under the language voter. Paid politicians understand votes, they don't get anything else. Now, here's why it has to be now. So we know about $26 billion of federal money, that's what we went over with Mr. Latrell. I fashioned one to Mr. Latrell, just to remind him of what he's promising to do to help us in the county commissioner's office, and I fashioned a third one to, uh, good friend of Cheryl's, uh, that I know she stays in touch with, and maybe Carol as well, Will Metcalf. That's a good start, but we need to get straight to what this irate, uh, real estate broker did. He's meeting this week. If you're a real estate broker, a citizen, a building inspector, you got a car with four wheels that rolls anywhere near this city, call Commissioner Walker and Riley. Everything that you bring and concern that is 105 north goes to Mr. Walker, south goes to Mr. Riley. And so we're not going to build a south loop that's just as sorry as a north loop, for example, right? So that $26 billion goes to HGAC and eventually goes to the county. The county's the one that determines whether we get it or not, and we better get a sizable hundreds of millions of it, and we better not stop till we get it, and better not start three years from now, because that broker is right. Three to five years from now, the time will be wrong. So we've got to get after this. In addition, our governor, whether you like him or not, is letting go of $100 billion, I'm assuming as it goes through, for Techstock. Let's bring back the three-phase 149 plan that evidently was in place, that I got asked about on the campaign trail, I didn't know nothing about, and let's take a shot at that again. Not to mention 2854, that needs to be widened down here.
The one downtown, I mean, downtown Montgomery?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Bring the three-phase thing back, if it's going to be $100 billion, I'm just asking for you, 100 millions, you know, something. We've got to strike in this next calendar year or so, because that's when that money is there. And when I originally went to try to, to do that, I was told by the politicians, well, we can't do any of that, because we don't actually make those decisions. Don't let them out. Tell them we have got an itch to scratch, and we need to squeak our wheel, and we need something more than a shot of WD-40 in the joints. How about several barrels of that oil? Now, you get what you, you take, okay? And you take what you can get, and we ain't getting nothing. And so I've been there two and a half years, and y'all told me, we ain't getting anything. So we've got to have power in numbers, folks. You don't have to live in our city, these folks are answering to a county, there's 600,000 voters. If they don't get 600,000 G-mails within the next two weeks, I'm going to be ticked off. Because, folks, you've got to get their attention somehow. So this is not money that they have in their plan, don't let them tell you that either. This is money that's coming in, and we need to be at those meetings at HGAC, and we need to be over there every week. Gary, send one one week, the next, but you carry the biggest weight, and I'll go with Make it happen. All right, motion closed. Unless y'all want to step in? Uh, Culcorst, y'all can fashion whatever you want, whatever your concerns are. And I went right on to their email site. I haven't heard back yet, but that was just yesterday. By the way, Ms. Culcorst is a business, and she has a business interest in our city as well, so she is a key person. Entertained motion to close.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn in second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
It is 7:00, and we are adjourned.